This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 8th, 2014, and was posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 8th, 2014, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. The fire exits are to my right and left, your left and right respectively. I would ask members of the public, as well as members of the dais, to speak into the microphones, and if necessary or desired assistive listening devices are available. Ms. Lynn Aris, welcome back to the council chambers. Could I impose on you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Mayor Minkoff?
Here.
Councilwoman Brill Mittler?
Here.
Councilman Erickson?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilman Malley?
Here.
Councilman Potts?
Here.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Here.
Or Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Are your two kids ready for us?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. I'm going to assume that Jenny Chapman, the Chair of the Main Street Board, is going to give us our Main Street Minute for this evening. Thank you to Jenny and Paul for joining us, and yes, please do, and we're eager to hear what you have to share with us.
I'm Jenny Chapman. I'm the President of Main Street Highland Park. Thanks for having us today. I wanted to start off by congratulating Rebecca Hirsch and Randy Solomon on the birth of their son. Rebecca Hirsch is our Executive Director, and she hasn't stopped for a minute. She's still in the process of, you know, planning with her staff for the Street Fair on May 18th, which is preceded by the Highland Park Run in the Park, the 5K. That's also May 18th at 9:00 a.m. Anyone is welcome to sign up. Planting Day is May 15th and 17th. That's a Thursday and a Saturday, giving lots of people opportunities to participate. And anyone can find out this information by going to MainStreetHP.org. And that's pretty much all I have for today.
Thank you. Any questions from any members of the council?
An actual minute.
Okay.
First time for everything.
I have a question. I have a question.
I'm just gonna take this capital back.
Any news on what's going on with Charlie Browns, the former Charlie Browns?
Just rumors, so I hesitate.
Okay.
But we're hopeful. It's looking pretty good.
That's very political.
Yeah. I do actually, I know that there are two businesses moving. They're expanding. Sushianna is planning on moving to near Pinos on North Fourth, and the Kosher Bakery is also planning on moving to North Fourth and expanding what, you know, their businesses there, and also renovating places that are empty, which is wonderful. So there are opportunities for businesses.
And this is on the North Fourth, you know, sort of kind of extending the business?
Right next to Pinos.
Okay, that's good, actually.
So there'll be a Kosher Bakery baking on premises, and Sushianna will be able to expand. So businesses are doing well.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council reports. I'm gonna start with Councilmember Foster Dublin.
I'm very, I'm gonna be very brief. This afternoon, we had the opportunity of Sergeant Abrams coming in and getting our borough or our administrative arm of the borough. He provided us with safety, a lot of safety tips, such as building lockdown policies, shelter policies, and building evacuation policies, and these are all very, very important facts for the employees, borough employees, to know and to be aware of in the event, God forbid, that there should be a need for any of this to be put in place. So he's continuing to keep us educated, updated, and keep us informed. As the policies get put in place, he'll come back and provide much more training to us. So it was a very interesting and informative discussion and presentation that he did for us. On another note, we lost one of our former lieutenants, and I'm gonna ask Chief Risco to come up and say a few words about Lieutenant Tony Mora. He predates me being in Highland Park, but I know you may have worked with him.
Yes, I did work with Lieutenant Mora. He actually started, I gave you the information, I believe he started the job when I was three. So he was here a long time. He spent 40 years in the Highland Park Police Department. He had a very distinguished career. He retired after 40 years as a lieutenant. He was also a life member of the Highland Park First Aid Squad, a member of the Fire Department Auxiliary, very active in the community. And after he retired, he moved to Florida, where he enjoyed many years with his wife, Vivian Provenzano-Mora, who actually is a member of the Highland Park Borough family. She had worked many, many years here at Borough Hall, lastly in the Tax Department. So his viewing will be Friday from 5:00 to 9:00 at the J. Quay Keown Funeral Home, and the funeral will be Saturday morning. And Tony was a true gentleman, a pleasure to work with, and our condolences on behalf of the Highland Park Police Department and the Borough goes to his family. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. That's my report.
Thank you. And just to amplify what the chief said, we extend our condolences to Lieutenant Mora's family as well. Okay, Councilmember Potts?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to report that the next senior luncheon will be coming up this Friday, April 11th, and then looking forward a little bit further down, the senior prom will be on June 19th, and that's something the seniors always look forward to, so for the seniors to mark that on their calendars as well. The Teen Advisory Committee is gonna be working with Sustainable Highland Park on a river cleanup area on June 1st. The Recreation Department, the material is out about the summer camps, they're gonna be beginning the week of July 7th, and there's lots of information and available to sign up for those. The Arts Commission has just met, again, kind of getting started up, and they have their very energetic group, and it's nice to see that's becoming more active. Also down the pike away, so to speak, is the Memorial Day Parade, which will be on Monday, May 26th. That'll start at 11 o'clock in New Brunswick, and then eventually work its way into Highland Park and end at the D'Boi Monument. And then lastly, in the area of arts, I just wanna congratulate the Highland Park High School Drama for a wonderful production of The Wizard of Oz, which was held a couple weeks ago. They just did a fantastic job, and they represent our high school and the community as a fine group of production people. So I just wanna congratulate them publicly for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Welkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. First, a big thank you to Demetrius Cambitzis, who very generously is donating a swing for handicapped children, and we plan to put that up at Carcy Street Park. This was an applicant, some of the people on the Universal Access Commission applied with the Park Partners Group and wasn't awarded the swing, but he found out about it, and it's just a really generous, generous gift. Let's see. Act Out, our Universal Access Commission's Theater Arts Group for adults with disabilities, is still on on Fridays at 1:30 in the afternoon at the Senior Youth Center. If you know anybody that's interested, please just join, just show up. It's a lot of fun. We've got a lot of people that have, that started out originally with the group, and they've stayed through, plus we've added, we keep adding more people every semester. Also, we're progressing with our Habitat House in Highland Park with that project. We'll be doing some fundraisers in the next few weeks. Look for our table at the Street Fair. We'll be selling some gifts to try to raise some funds, and please consider buying a two-by-four. You could sign your name on it, and we'll use that to help build the house. We also plan on having a breakfast and some other events. We'll keep you posted on that. The Friends of the Library continue their Poetry Night series on Tuesday, April 22 at 7:30 p.m. with Maria Masiata Gillen. She's written over 18 books, the winner of the 2008 American Book Award, and the 2011 Barnes and Noble Writers for Writers Award. So join us for that. It's a really fun series. And also, Gail, I don't know if you were gonna talk about Rethink Highland Park?
Oh, you can. I was going to, but go right ahead.
Well, I just wanted to mention it because, oh.
Feel free to talk amongst yourselves.
Sorry.
It's okay.
It's a wonderful group of high school students led by Oscar Lee, who is joining us on the Human Relations Commission, and they won a Park Partners grant. They're having two more sessions this week at 7 o'clock at the high school. On tomorrow, Wednesday, at 7:00 p.m., Criminal Justice and Educational Inequality, and then on Friday at 7:00, a forum on housing discrimination and pop culture. So please join us, join everybody for that. And that's all I have. And this is in Passau, and happy Easter to everybody. Thank you.
Are you pointing at me for a reason?
Pardon? Pardon?
That's what I thought. Councilmember Brill Mittler?
Okay, everyone. Get ready to park it. Our first Park It event will be held the last week of April, April 20, actually, near the end of the month, April 21st through 27th. You may recall that the Borough is executing a marketing plan to help drive new visitors to town. This particular week is a week for the world. April 21st through 27th, we'll have events throughout the town. Residents and visitors will be able to experience everything that Highland Park has to offer. Culminate, the week will culminate with the Environmental Commission's Earth Day celebration on the 27th. So please, come downtown, come to the parks, the library, the rec center downtown. Some of our retailers and stores are participating as well. And enjoy this week for the world. The only thing I would like to add to what Susie said about the Park Partners winners, Rethink HP, I am particularly proud of several of our winning groups because they are our students in Highland Park High School. And Oscar and his group have put together an amazing plan on getting residents to better understand each other and to improve relations between different groups within Highland Park. So if Susie told you about the remaining events, I hope you'll all be able to go out and see them. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to express my compliments, Gail, to you and to your Communications Committee. Once again, I think you did an incredibly fine job with the Highland Park News. That's the actual printed newspaper, and regardless of what I think, and I thought it was terrific, and as a person who's produced many of these newspapers, I was very pleased with what I saw. So, and in addition to complimenting you, I'd like to thank you and your committee. You might also be interested in knowing that friends from a variety of places, New Brunswick and surrounding environs, apparently also saw this, either because it showed up in their office, or somehow somebody gave them a copy, or a client or customer brought it in, and people were uniformly and universally impressed, and I'm hardly surprised. So not only does it reflect well on us locally, and I hope generates the requisite, or satisfies the requisite desire for information locally, but I think it's a very positive reflection on the town that extends well beyond our borders. So thank you for both of those very important, helping us achieve both of those very important objectives. Okay, Councilman Erickson?
Tonight, we'll have the budget hearing on the 2014 municipal budget. Through this, throughout this past year, the Borough initiated several new projects that will benefit the community. The new police building, which is right across the street, is scheduled to be completed by the end of the summer. The building will create a more suitable professional environment for the police department, providing increased safety and convenience for residents. Two people have already, on the council have already talked about our Park Partners program. There were 14 applicants, and 170 residents participated in voting for their favorite programs. Of the five winners, they're currently underway doing their projects. We have incorporated this program into the 2014 budget to continue it on an annual budget basis. The 2014 budget is $14,95,274, with a municipal tax increase of $182 per year on an average assessment of $150,000. Our 2014 budget is within state guidelines and caps for a municipality, and is a reflection of our commitment to maintain fiscal responsibility. We continue to demonstrate accountability and restraint by developing and making improvements throughout the Borough. On a personal note, I'd just like to thank people who've sent me cards or notes, or talked to me on an individual basis, asking how I am and how I'm doing. I appreciate that, and I'm doing pretty well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does that include people who left your voicemails? Does that include people who left your voicemails, too? Okay. We'll talk later.
Yes, the people I usually don't listen to.
Oh, that's good. Then I'm glad, then I'm glad I left your voicemail. Excellent. And I'm glad I left your voicemail. John, thank you for the update on the budget, and thank you for all your hard work, and we are, we're obviously very happy that you're feeling better and feeling, that you're feeling better. Both are important to us. And I just, there's something that I'm gonna depart from procedure for a second, just before we get to the council president. Our auditor is here tonight, Ron Gardner. Ron, yes, I know that we pay you as a consultant, but you deal, I mean, your firm, Hodglick and Morrison, deals with, what, hundreds of municipalities around the state of New Jersey? Is that an exaggeration? You certainly deal with a ton, right?
Yes.
You have a litany of municipal clients. Just out of curiosity, you were nice enough to share a couple of sentiments before. This is not about me. This is about, hopefully, the Borough will feel good about this. Would you mind just briefly sharing your own observations, because you've been with us for quite some time, just in terms of how you think our process goes, and how you think we stand financially, and, you know, just our overall fiscal well-being?
Well, this evening, Mayor and members of the council, you'll be holding your public hearing on the budget, and you have received approval from the Division of Local Government Services to adopt your budget if you are, if so desired tonight. But what the mayor is, I guess, referring to is that he congratulated me for, you know, moving the budget along, and I says, oh, I'm just a scribbler. I put the numbers on the budget document, and I got to give the credit to the mayor and the council and to the Borough Administrator for their hard work. And out of our office, this is the first budget to move along to be, hold a public hearing and be eligible to be adopted for calendar year 2014.
There you go. Thank you, and thanks to everybody who made that possible. Okay. Oh, no report. Council President Malley, do you have a report?
No, thank you.
Just checking. Borough Administrator's report?
Thank you, Mayor. Everyone has spoken tonight about the Communications Department. I just wanted to update everyone, because that is a new department that was added to the 2014 budget this year. Our newly created Communications Department serves as an effective resource for the council to communicate with the residents. This department produces the biannual Highland Park News that the mayor spoke about, and the biweekly e-news. In addition, they handle Nixle, Facebook, Twitter, and social media communications. They generate flyers, press releases, and notices for Borough events, and announcements are available to assist council members with Borough-related writings or publicity. They have their own email address, and that email comes to myself, the Borough Administrator, and also to the Communications Department at communications@hpborough, that's B-O-R-O dot com. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm gonna interrupt again just before we get to the Borough Attorney's Report, or non-report as the case may be. You know, we have the department heads here this evening, and I believe that it's by ordinance, or by law, or by statute, or all of the above, that the department heads are required to be here. So as long as you're here, let me say the following to you. First, thank you, because with each year, we give you a new set of challenges, probably a more difficult set of challenges. We constantly ask you to do more with less. Because we're a small community, and we have a real feel of intimacy and connection with our residents, we know that that puts you directly in contact with our residents on a regular basis. Sometimes they're extremely satisfied, as you know, with the work you do. Sometimes, unfortunately, they're not quite as satisfied, or satisfied as we might like them, and you learn of that just as quickly, if not more quickly sometimes, than we do. And yet, you're all still here, so we're proud of the continuity, longevity, and camaraderie that you all display. Your professionalism is without peer, and I think you've all done an outstanding job, not just working with what we've given you, but finding ways to take what we've given you and leveraging it to do some absolutely extraordinary things. So whatever, whatever it is that, whatever it is that gets accomplished in this Borough, the governing body provides the leadership, and the administrator obviously provides the leadership to the staff, but it's still up to the staff to actually make it happen. And day in and day out, you guys do that in every possible way, and we're extremely grateful, and I'm hopeful that you'll communicate these sentiments to each and every one of the people that work with you. We're very, very grateful to all of them, and we look forward to their continued success, which is our continued success as a Borough. Okay, Borough Attorney's Report?
Non-report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I do have a very brief, well, for me, very brief report. I had mentioned at the last council meeting that I was going to be spending some time with our friends at Public Service Electric and Gas, or now known as PSENG, at a meeting that was convened by the Board of Public Utilities. And joining me at that meeting recently were Council President Malley, Borough Administrator Kovak, and Police Chief Risco. I would say there were at least a dozen people from PSENG at that meeting, and I would say that there were equally as many from the Board of Public Utilities. I'm not going to go into a great level of detail, because that meeting probably went for, what, well over two hours, perhaps longer? And there were probably five major themes, I would say, that were covered there. One is reliability, two, customer service, three is public safety, four, coordination of communication, and then the fifth, and probably the one that's most important to everybody right now, is restoration of the prior status of the electrical system, especially as it relates to the removal of the pad transformers, which are distributed in about a half a dozen locations around town. So I'll take the last one first. The last one is that PSENG is now providing us weekly updates on the status of the repairs at the Edison substation. You may recall, unfortunately, that back in January, there was a very, very significant fire at the Edison substation over by the train station, and apparently, these are not modular components. You know, it's not like Lego that the piece is just snap in and snap out. So apparently, there were some custom components that had to be ordered, tested, built, and then shipped, and a number of those have begun arriving, and during this entire time, apparently, all the other work that could exist, that could proceed independently of those components being delivered to the substation, that work has been ongoing. The best information that we have right now, and for the last two weeks, Public Service has provided us with updates to suggest that this continues to be the case. At the end of April, which is just a few short weeks away, they said that they are on track to have the substation fully repaired and operational, and once that is verified as being done, they will come and collect their pad transformers, which speaks to issue number two. I mentioned one of the aspects of issue number two, public safety. We had pictures that we showed to the regulators to reinforce our concerns about the fact that people were effectively being potentially put in harm's way because they were being forced off of sidewalks or into places where maybe there wasn't such great visibility for motorists, and it just was an accident waiting to happen. Thankfully, that has not happened. There are, there do continue to be various representatives of the contract of PSENG to provide some kind of presence, both to monitor the status of the transformers and the surrounding electricity, electrical lines, as well as, I guess, just to sort of keep an eye out for the potential for any kind of pedestrian hazards. But that's sort of on a rotating basis, as opposed to a site-specific basis now, and I assume that that will also disappear when the transformers disappear. The other thing we explained about public safety relates to the issue of communications, and really, I guess, when I talk about reliability, I should also talk about predictability. We explained that there are a few things that happen when there's an outage like this if we don't get accurate information. One is that we have resources that we have to plan for. It's obviously crucial that we be able to let the public know accurately, to the best of everyone's ability, what's happened, what we can expect to happen, what they can expect to happen, and when power will be restored. However, when those, when that information is not timely, or when it's not accurate, inconsistent, or conflicting, depending on with whom we may be speaking at PSENG, it creates a number of stresses on the residents, but also on our own government infrastructure. For example, what happens in a situation like that is it increases the number of calls that our police department gets, and as I explained to PSENG, they effectively become an outsourced form of customer service to PSENG, as I mentioned at the public meeting here about two months ago, a month and a half ago. The second thing I explained, which was far more important to us, was that when there's an outage that lasts for, predicted to last six to 12 hours, we may make one set of arrangements as it relates to the number of first responders that need to be available, and what we communicate to residents, and what we do in terms of whether it's warming centers, or other types of alternative sheltering, or quasi-sheltering arrangements that may need to be made available to residents that have those needs. However, when that outage extends over a longer duration, then there are issues related to scheduling, overtime, the types of resources that we may need to bring in from the county or the state or other places, and that all can rapidly degrade, not just the quality of life, but the potential for public safety to be compromised in the Borough. And the regulators certainly agreed with that, and they appreciated that, and, you know, we explained that thankfully, the police in Highland Park have done an absolutely remarkable job, both during Sandy and in this most recent set of outages, and that at best, we could say that the actual number of hazards were minimal, right, and the actual number of incidents were minimal. You couldn't even call them criminal, and thankfully, there were no serious injuries to life limb or property. So in this most recent set of events, I mean, obviously, Sandy was a different situation. But notwithstanding that, the issue related to communication went further, which was the extent to which PSENG communicates with the media, and is that what they tell us, the timeliness with which we get information, the sources of that information, et cetera. And we sensitized them to the fact, and I even went so far as to remind them, that they themselves monitor our Facebook pages for the accuracy of what we say relative to what they tell us. And I pointed out to them that there was ample opportunity for grandstanding on the part of this municipality, and we never once took that road. We took the high road at all times because we felt that was the appropriate tone we wanted to set, because our focus wasn't on, if you will, throwing PSENG under the bus. The focus was on getting the power on and keeping it on. And we knew that was their job, and all we wanted to do was do whatever we could to remind them that we were here and needed their help. And so my understanding is, if I may say so, without proverbially throwing them under the bus, that we've actually moved a little quicker than they have when it comes to communications. For whatever reason, they're first ramping up their own social media capability. We had Nixle a while ago. We have a Facebook page, and obviously, we have a number of other mechanisms ever evolving and ever improving to keep our residents informed of what's happening. The other thing we talked to them about was the contradiction, when we talk about communication, the contradiction between what happens on the website and what happens when somebody calls customer service. And apparently, there's a task force of some sort that's addressing that. The only thing that I can say without excusing PSENG is this is a big company with big systems, lots of people that have to touch these processes. The regulatory process adds a layer of, what should I say, an additional layer of approval, but apparently, things just move very, very slowly, as we well know. We made sure that we, that they knew how much we appreciated the work that the line people were doing and had done on our behalf, that we absolutely appreciated the fact that safety was paramount to those individuals at all times. And at the same time, we also explained to them that the bottom line on this is that we don't want it to be an ongoing issue, that we just wanted to know that the power was on, would stay on, and that we wouldn't have to think about this, and that if it went off again for some reason, that people in Highland Park could expect to be treated with respect, courtesy, and professionalism, and I'll come back to that in just a second. So the reliability issue should be resolved when the substation is restored. Even though, as we heard, the infrastructure is around 50 or so years old, the bigger issue is whenever they deal with, whatever this energy resiliency program is, that's a multi-billion dollar rate case pending before the Board of Public Utilities, that's, I guess, the quote "ultimate upgrade," that's well beyond the scope of this discussion and the duration of, you know, when or where that may actually occur. That's an ongoing process. But for our purposes right now, in the short run, what'll basically take us back to normal is when the transformers leave, will be when that substation is fixed. The legal issues will be, communication is going to be a work in progress. They've committed to continue to do their utmost, to be timely in their communication. At one point, there was a live example, there was a rather spirited disagreement that I had with one of the attorneys from PSENG about my sources for information, and another PSENG rep at the meeting said, well, he got that information from me at a public meeting. So they understand that even internally, they have to do a better job of getting their act. act together. They didn't excuse their behavior necessarily. They tried to continue to educate us about the complexities with which they deal, and I basically explained to them that it's a two-way street, that they have their issues, we have our issues, we need to work together. But they really needed a, I felt, a dose of empathy when it came to what it was that we experienced during that period of time. So in a nutshell, let's see, I think I covered everything. I mean, so are things perfect, is all well and good with PSCNG as far as we're concerned? And I left the meeting ambivalent. I'll be very candid. Are there things that I wish they could have committed to? There's, I'll give you an example, however, of why I left ambivalent. When I talk about customer service and some of the issues that we experienced, it, we, as I recall, we did some kind of request of the people that either posted on Facebook, or people who had contacted us, that had mentioned that they'd been either hung up or brutally treated by the folks at PSCNG. They had gone back and listened to every recording they had a record of. They had, and we were not able to identify anybody who said they'd been hung up on initially that came back and was able to verify that for us. That doesn't mean that people in Highland Park were not truthful, and it doesn't mean it didn't happen. What it means is, it's kind of like what happens when you take, take your car to a mechanic, and you try to explain a condition they can't replicate in order to fix it. So they, what they did do is put an escalation procedure in place, so that if somebody from Highland Park were to call during a situation like this in the future, that they would be escalated to a supervisor, a supervisor would call them back in real time to address their concerns. So anyway, I mean, I could go on, but I won't. The bottom line is this. The power, thankfully, has been on, more or less, ex the interruption the night before we went to PSCNG, or just to kind of, and we told them that was a reinforcement of the issues we have to deal with. But at this point, at the end of April, hopefully, things will be back to normal in every sense of the word, and I am hopeful that this is not something we're going to have to deal with again anytime soon. To the extent that they've got these other ongoing concerns, we certainly tried to sensitize the Board of Public Utilities to the internal disconnects and issues that need to be addressed, and we're hopeful that they're going to continue to do what they can with PSCNG to make sure that these issues don't recur, whether it's here or anyplace else within their service area. That's my report. Okay. So we're up to public discussion. Is there any discussion from the public? Okay, seeing that there's none. Clerk, can you report on advertising the cap rate exception ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Calendar year 2014 ordinance to exceed the municipal appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit's publication on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Can I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Public hearing? Okay, seeing that there's none, can I have a motion to adopt and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Beryl Middler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Thank you. Clerk, can you report on advertising the public hearing on the 2014 budget?
The 2014 Highland Park Municipal Budget was introduced and approved on first reading on March 4th, 2014. A summary was duly advertised in the Home News Tribune on March 14th, 2014, with the public hearing scheduled for April 8th, 2014. Copies of the budget were made available to the public in Borough Hall and the Highland Park Public Library.
Okay. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Public hearing? Seeing that there's none, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I don't need to vote on it? Oh, we're not voting on the budget? Okay, fine. All right. So do you do that now?
Yep.
Okay. So can you read us the resolution to adopt the 2014 municipal and water and sewer budget on final reading by title?
And there's a test for the department heads, so you have to listen, right? Kathy's looking at me like, really? Be resolved by the Mayor and Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park. County of Middlesex set the budget. Hearing before set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated of the sums therein set forth as appropriations and authorization of the amount of, A, for municipal purposes, $10,359,473. For minimum library tax, $428,725.67. Total tax levy, $10,072,663. Summary of revenues, general revenue surplus anticipated $900,000. Miscellaneous revenues anticipated $24,798. Notary raised by taxation for municipal purpose, purposes, $10,359,473. Minimum library tax, $428,725.67. Total revenues, $14,095,294. Summary of appropriations, general appropriations within caps, operations including contingent, Deferred charges and statutory expenditures, $1,352,539. Excluded from caps, $1,061,758. Operations excluded from caps, $1,093,41. Capital improvements, $33,330. Municipal debt service, $1,836,543. Reserve fund collected taxes, $280,000. Total appropriations, $14,095,294. Is hereby certified that the within budget is a true copy of the budget to be finally adopted by resolution of the governing body on the 8th day of April 2014. It is further certified that each item of revenue and appropriation is set forth in the same amount and by the same title as appeared in the calendar year 2014. Per budget, all amendments thereto, if any, have been approved by the Director of Local Government Services.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the budget?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Beryl Middler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay. Clerk, can you report on advertising the amendment to the police off-duty ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park, 2010, Chapter 64, concerning rates of pay for off-duty police services, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit's publication on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay. Can I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Public hearing? Seeing that there's none, can I have a resolution to adopt and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Beryl Middler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Clerk, can you report on advertising the amendment to the snowing ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 368, Article 1, concerning the collection of the crust of snow or ice removal from sidewalks or curb cuts by the Borough of Highland Park, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit's publication on file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Can I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Public hearing? Seeing that there's none, can I have a resolution to adopt and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Beryl Middler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. We're up to our consent agenda, items 15 through 27 inclusive, items 414, 129 through 414, 141. These are all resolutions to approve the business, to credit water and sewer account for treetops at Highlands LLC, to award bids for the new telephone system for the new police department building, and existing fire department and municipal buildings, to purchase the recording system for the police department, to approve pay estimate number 19, H&amp;S Construction and Mechanical, Inc., for public safety building improvements, to approve the 2014 tree planting project, to approve payment to the public safety building architect, to amend the annual salary resolution, to approve change orders for the public safety building, to approve roof repair at River Road Pump Station, to credit water and sewer account for 200 Jackson Avenue, to approve wrecker licenses, and to authorize execution of the amended 2014 Information and Assistance Program grant. May I have a resolution, a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Beryl Middler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. The mayor hereby appoints the following: Bruce Tucker to the Library Board of Trustees, Chris Gash to the Arts Commission, and to the Council on Aging, Dee Donnelly, Selma Gold, Blatt Lillis Salteel, Gertrude Gare, and Celia Diamond. Can I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?